decisions as a student, company secretaries as a profession requires to be to work more ethically in each and every business he does or even in those matters pertaining to guiding the board members of a company. It becomes all the more important to reinvent and evolve ourselves in every aspect of our journey. For discussing the true essence on the subject, we have with us Pooja Dr. Janwal Selswami, life coach and eminent speaker B A P S Swaminarayan Sansta. We request C S Rajesh Sitarpara, council member, the ICSI, to please escort our guest, Pooja Dr. Janwal Selswami, life coach and eminent speaker, B A P S Swaminarayan Sansta, to the dais. Let's have a big round of applause. C S Rajesh Sitarpara, council member, escorting our guest to the dais. We'll begin the session in five minutes. Request you to kindly occupy your seats. Thank you. Check, hey. Check, hey, hey. Let's have a big round. C S Rajesh Sitarpara, council member, escorting our guest, Pooja Dr. Janwal Selswami, life coach and eminent speaker, B A P S Swaminarayan Sansta, to the dais. A big round of applause. Would request C S Rajesh Sitarpara to please welcome the guest by presenting him with a lantern. Thank you so. Doctor Pooja Janwal Selswami graduated as a mechanical engineer from B B M College of Engineering Gujarat and was initiated as a Sadhu by his holiness Pramukh Swami Maharaj, the fifth spiritual successor of Bhagwan Swaminarayan. He has been conferred the doctorate of literature by two universities of his exemplary social service and has also been honoured as Surya Ratna, the saint of modern India, the National Lifetime Achievement Award accorded by the Suryadatta Group of Institutes, India. Recently, Swami is honoured with sixth key to the city by the US government. Thank you. I request C S Rajesh Tarpara, council member, the ICSI, to kindly take the session ahead, please.
A very warm good morning and warm welcome to all of you on the second day of this fifty first national convention of the company secretaries at holy city Varanasi, Kashi Visvanath Temple and Gangamaya Ki Jai Ho. I welcome you on behalf of entire council in the presence of Pooja Dr. Jyavan Salya Swamiji on this morning. Swamiji's life revolve inspiring and motivating the peoples around them for achieving their excellency in the life. The session today, the name of the session is reinvent, evolve and lead the profession ethically. Friends, when we became the company secretary and during the journey when we were studying as a company secretary, we have been taught how to comply with the law, how to comply with the due dates and with lots of stress of deadline errors, now portal glitches and all the things amendments, unforeseen events, pressure from the client, pressure from the government in terms of regulatory enforcement, amendment, interpretation issues and so many stresses have been there. We have been continuously taught to how to deal these kind of the professional problems and professional stresses. This is an imbalance of the life and today we are learning how to create the family governance. We have been taught for professional governance, corporate governance, but this is the time to learn about family governance. Friends, I am sure that whatever be you are, how intelligent you are, how wealthy, how earning you are, but without the support of the family, without the support of the governance, without the support of the society, you will, you will never reach in the, any destination and you will reach nowhere in the world without the support of the family. And the word reinvent, today is not the same day and tomorrow will never be the same. The reinvent itself says that what we have done in the past, how we can learn from the past and design our future in a amicable way, in a practicable way. The acceptance of the challenges, unforeseen event is create the lives and create the stress and how to deal with that stress management is the motto of today's session. To evolve means adapting, changing circumstances and learning the experience constantly and trying to improve ourselves for the betterment of the society, betterment of the family members itself. To lead the professional ethically means to be custodian of various values and principles and guide our actions. It is commitment to the fairness and compliance of responsibility with trust, responsibility and accountability and the respects. The society will respect the profession when we observe high code of conduct and ethics. Always we see the army men if running on the society, running on the road, we salute them without any force because we have high respect towards them because they observe the highly discipline and high code of conduct and that is what is expected from professional like us. Friends, obstacles are there, up and down are there in the life. We have to deal with, we have to accept it. I am sure that nowhere in the world with the business is there, the profession is there, whatever business you do, the road is not smooth for all. The same road is available to us and same road was available to Dhirubai Ambani, same road was available to all the entrepreneurs, all the tatas, Ambani, whatever they, they created the empire and on the same road we have to run with so many obstacles and that is the stress management. In this session, the Swamiji will enlighten us the personal development, work-life balance, stress management and responsible decision-making in the process of the growth of professional governance and ethical business practice. With these remarks, I would like to Pooja Dr. Jyavan Salya Swamiji to please give their words of wisdom to the gathering. Thank you, Swami. Gunati to Aksharam Brahma Bhagwan Purusho Tamaha. Jano Jana Nidham Satyam Uchthate Bhavabandhana. With prostrations at the divine feet of Bhagwan Swaminarayan, my Guru Hari Parampuja Pramukh Swami Maharaj and my Pragat Guru Hari Parampuja Mahan Swami Maharaj, my heartiest namaskar, Jai Sri Krishna, Jai Sri Ram, Jai Swaminarayan and a very good evening, very good morning. Well, the topic shared with me today is reinvent, evolve and lead. And before the start of my talk, I would like to congratulate the Western India Regional Council of ICSI for receiving the best council, best regional council award for the year two thousand twenty-two. And my good friend C S Rajesh Tarpara was the president, so I especially congratulate him and all of the W A R C team members today. It is always pleasure to be acclaimed for your work and it's always a sense of joy and memory that we are able to accomplish our work properly. So finally, when coming to the topic reinvent, evolve and lead, first of all, let me ask a very simple question to all of you sitting here. How many of you really believe that I need certain or at least some positive change in my life so that I can better fit my ecosystem? Just raise your hands. If you believe that I need a positive change in my life, all of you. To need a positive change, you need to give a serious thought to it. No man is complete. So positive change in ourselves, in our thought process, in our behavioral patterns, in our attitudes and expressions can make us a better person and fit our ecosystem well. So we need to reinvent ourselves. And when we reinvent, we evolve. We evolve as a professional. We evolve as a human being. We evolve as a family person. And thus, when we evolve as a professional, we lead our organization well. When we evolve as a family person, we create more happiness for our family. And when we evolve as a human being, we lead our communities well. So every person, as Michelangelo used to say, at the age of ninety, even after creating theater, that I'm a student of my profession. So first of all, I believe that I'm a lifelong student. Even, even, even after forty and fifty years of practice in my profession, I am still a student. I request all the audience to keep aside their mobile phones. Apke haath me se mobile phone apne jeb me rak do ya purse me rak do? This is not the way to attend a conference and this is not the way to respect a speaker. Thank you. Ap sah professionals ho, thodi professional attikets bhi apme huni chahiye. Professional samajdarhi bhi apme huni chahiye. To ek saath do kam nahi kar sakte. Thank you. Ye attiket sabhi conference me aur aaj ki conference me aur do din baaki hai maintain karna. Ap professionals ho, be a smart professional. Ap professional ho, to be a wisdom-filled professional. To baat hum ye kar raha hai. Ki we are a lifelong student. Till the age that we leave and we work, we can constantly learn, yes or no? If we believe that we are students and the process of learning is constant, we can keep aside certain egos, we can keep aside certain attitudes and thus we can learn better, we can reinvent ourselves. On a once on a fine Sunday morning, a gentleman was sitting with his morning newspaper and a cup of coffee. He was interested in some very good article of his choice published on that day. Enjoying a cup of coffee besides him and is little since seven or eight-year-old, he ran up to him and said, Dad, you promised me a cricket bat this weekend. He did not get one for me. And the dad said, I'm sorry, my little boy, but I'll definitely get one for you tomorrow morning, Monday. Today's Sunday, the shops are closed. He said, Dad, you said the same thing last Sunday. And the dad again said, I'm sorry, but I cannot get your bat today. The little boy said that today we have a cricket match with our neighboring society and I've boasted in front of my friends that I'll come with a cricket bat. So how would I show my face? The dad said, I'm sorry, but I'll get you definitely a bat tomorrow. But still this little boy was harassing his father, not allowing him to read his favorite column. So the dad thought that I must employ him somewhere, get him engaged him somewhere. He was searching around for some work and he found an A four size paper just beside him on which the world map was printed. He got an idea. He picked it up and showed to the little boy and says, this is the world map. Look at it carefully. I give you time to study. Then I'll tear it into small pieces. I'll shuffle it. I'll give it to you and you need to get back the whole world map as it is with the help of the salotip stick from behind. A little boy said, okay, a seven-year or eight-year-old, the dad knew that he would not be able to make up the world map again because he has not studied geography, not seen the world map before. And the dad said, if you can get it right, I'll give you a bat right away. The little boy said, okay. So the dad told him, see, this is India, this is Europe, this is China, this is Russia, this is Ukraine. At least it is there at the moment. Then this is England and this is North America, this is Latin America. And then he tore it into small pieces, shuffled it and gave it to the little boy. And the little boy was off with the job. The dad felt relaxed, but to his surprise, the little boy came back in ten minutes. The whole world map finally put with salotips from behind and gave it to dad, see dad, my homework done. And dad was like surprised. Did you take anybody's help? He said, no, there is nobody in the house. How can I take somebody's help? And he was very surprised. How did you do it? And little boy with all the broad smile on his face, he picked up the paper from his dad's handbag and turned it around and said, see dad, behind this world map was printed of a man standing. I adjusted the man and in the front, the whole world got adjusted automatically. Behind this world map was printed a photograph of a man standing. I adjusted the man and on the other side, the whole world got adjusted. You adjust yourself and your world will get adjusted. You reinvent yourself and you will not have any complaints of life. That is the most important aspect of life. To reinvent yourself. Reinvention, jada ta kya samajte, what do we mean? Better in knowledge, better in skills, better in talent, better in know-hows, better in connectivity, better in work procedures. This is only ten percent. Ninety percent we need to reinvent ourselves as a human being because we are first human beings and then professionals. How many of you agree with this statement? We are first human beings and then professionals. If you reinvent yourself as a human being and you become a wonderful human being, take this statement from me today. If you become a wonderful human being, you will naturally casually become a smart professional. A smart professional is a subset of a wonderful human being. We need to reinvent ourselves as a human being. That reinvention is, let's talk practical now. We talked all theory, let's talk practical, what it is. Redesigning and restructuring your inner self. As I said, not just the outer self. By reinven, normally we mean redesigning our outer self, more in knowledge, more in skills, more in talent, more in connectivity. It's fine, it's okay, it's needed. But redesigning and reinvention, better I mean is the inner self in terms of values, in terms of virtues. If you become a wonderful human being, then being a smart professional is a subset of it. You know coal, graphite and diamond are real brothers, rather triplets. All three are made up of carbon and nothing except carbon. But if the carbon atoms come together in half-assed way, the final product is a car, is a coal. If the same carbon atoms come together in the hexagonal structure that we studied in chemistry, the benzene ring structure, the final outcome is graphite, better used. And the same carbon atoms, they come together in a tetradal structure, the final outcome is a diamond. So coal, graphite and diamond are real brothers, rather triplets, but you could see the difference in their market price and value, isn't it? Ek bhai chota sa hai, usme dusra bhai to truck bara jata hai. In a small piece of diamond, you can get truckloads of coal. Why? The answer is design of the internal structure. Outer structure is the same of all three, the carbon atoms. But how well they are placed with each other? How well they are designed with each other? How well the final structure outcome has come? So our value as a human being and professional depends upon the design of the internal structure. Who internal structure kya hai? First is, let's talk practical. Always be a prosperity thinker, never ever be a poverty thinker. This is the first step of design of the internal structure to convert ourselves from coal to graphite and graphite to diamond. Be a prosperity thinker. Never ever be a poverty thinker. What does a prosperity thinker think? Today is my day. Today I'm going to get up from my bed and go to office and try to do something, I'll get something. If not today, tomorrow morning when I open the window of my bedroom and the first rays of sun coming in will be rays of hope. If not today, tomorrow I'm going to meet somebody who's going to help me. I see darkness, but at the end of darkness, there is some light. These are the thoughts and emotions of a prosperity thinker. And what does a poverty thinker think? He thinks, oh my God, there is all darkness, there is no light at the end of the tunnel, there is nobody to help me. I'm not getting any support from anywhere. These are the thoughts of a poverty thinker. The first important aspect of reinventing ourselves is become always a prosperity thinker. Hoga, karenge, kuch hua payega, madad milegi, kar payenge, academics hai, experience hai, kuch karenge. So you never slip into a depression mode, you never slip into a negative mode, you never ever slip into a state of loneliness, which is the most important aspect of life, isn't it? In the worst happenings of your life when you don't have anything with you, by anything I mean everything. In the worst circumstances of life when you don't have anything with you, still the thought process belongs to you. The kind of the thoughts, the authority of it belongs to you, yes or no? Koi bhi kathin aur gambir parisstiti me kis prakar ke vichar karna hai, vo to apke haath me hai na? Emotions kis prakar ke generate hone dena hai, vo to apke haath me hai na? Am I right or wrong? Apke pas kuch nahi bacha to vichar to hai na? And do you believe that it is my fundamental birthright that even if I don't have five rupees in my pocket, still I have the right to think of a business of five crore rupees? Do you believe that you have that birthright? That belief is reinventing yourself. That belief in you, strengthening that belief is reinventing yourself and you evolve as a strong-minded, strong-hearted person to face the circumstances and challenges of your life so that you succeed, bring people along with you. Prosperity thinking is important. I come from the B A P S Swaminarayan Sansta. We are one of the largest organizations of the world with a permanent seat in the United Nations as an NGO. How many of you have been to the Swamina Akshar Dam in New Delhi? Just raise your hands. Almost all of you, I come from that organization. Our Guruji Pramukh Swami Maharaj, in a span of forty-five years, he created thirteen hundred institutions of social service. So the organization that I come from, we run more than thirteen hundred hospitals, hostels, schools, colleges, community centers, sanskar kandras, mandirs and akshardams. We are directly involved in the administration, in the management, in the HR of all these institutes. So koi aisi baat nahi hai ki do page padke main aapke samne aah khada ho ke kuch bolne ke prayatna kar raha hu. We know what is administration, we know what is management, we know what is HR. Thirteen hundred institutions of social service, Pramukh Swami Maharaj created in a span of forty-five years. So every fifteenth day, he created an institute of social service. Ap me se koi aise bate ho yahan pe jinon ne har pandar ve din ek nahi office nahi shair me chalu ki ho. Kabhi socha bhi hai? Chalo socha nahi, kabhi swapna bhi aaya hai? Pramukh Swami Maharaj created from getting the land to construction of the institute and dedicating it to the society. Every fifteen days for forty-five years. He initiated eleven hundred saints like us and more than nine hundred of them are graduates, post-graduates, charity accountants and doctors, engineers. Many of our saints are Harvard, Stanford, Carnegie Mellon, Yale graduates. More than two hundred and fifty saints out of them are born American and US and British citizens. Ye maine aapko isliye kaha ki aapko ye na lagenge, kuch chala nahi hoga, kuch jama nahi hoga, kuch thik nahi chala hoga, iske yahan ke bate hai. Jada ta logon ke man me ye baat aati hai. Ap me se kitne bate ho yahan jinon ne apna graduation nineteen ninety me pura kiya tha aur uske ya usse pele? Haath niche rakhe, after nineteen ninety, jinon ne apna graduation pura kiya, after nineteen, raise your hands. Jada ta log vahi bate hai. Let me tell you, I finished my B mechanical engineering before you finish your graduation. So bahut samajdarhi se yahan hai. Why I said this statistics? Because Pramukh Swami Maharaj, he created so many institutions, created eighty thousand volunteer force. He traveled to sixty countries and eighteen thousand villages and towns to uplift people's character, to mobilize social services. He was once asked, which thought remains with you twenty-four by seven? He said that the thought of hurting anybody has never entered my mind. This is called ethical working and ethical living. The thought of hurting anybody physically, mentally or emotionally has never entered my mind. This is reinventing yourself. If you enter yourself in office politics, if you involve yourself in some kind of leg pulling at if you involve yourself in some kind of leg pulling at your office, if you get involved in some time of wrong complaining to the boss of some working colleague, if you try to create an atmosphere of giving less support to a working colleague and creating a group at your office, remain ready for the same treatment after two or five years. The world is round. It has no corners, so it doesn't have the place to keep your wrongs. Reinvent yourself that I cannot do anything wrong at my workplace and in my social circle. You evolve and you will lead your profession. It is a dignified life. That is dignity of life. यह गौरव है मनुष्य का, I cannot do anything wrong in my life. I live a quality life. If a dog barks, another five dogs start barking. Barking तो सभी को आता है। उसमें यह, ego लेने की जरूरत नहीं कि मैंने जरा झोर से bark किया। बाकी चार को बिठा दिया। Everybody knows shouting, very few people know to remain silent in a state of wisdom and yet move things. That is reinventing yourself. And then you evolve, Pramuksh Swami Maharaj evolved, he was just fifth standard pass, but he lived an absolute ethical life. Selflessly for the society. So he evolved as a leader and it was his dream to come up with Swaminaya Lakshadam in New Jersey, America, that our guru Mahanswami Maharaj inaugurated just about a month back. And it is the largest Hindu mandir on hundred and eighty-five acres of land in the western hemisphere and the second largest in the world. Twelve thousand five hundred volunteers that selflessly serve there. To inspire people to selflessly serve. There were teenagers, young youngsters, boys and girls who left aside their one year of studies and one year of office, put resignation in their jobs to selflessly serve in this project. To create a mass movement of selfless service by inspirations, it comes from an ethical living. That our guruji Mahanswami Maharaj has today. So second aspect is pure and ethical living, don't compromise with ethics. See your academics, your talents, your experiences can open any gate for you. But only your character can keep that gate open. The moment you lose out on ethics, whoever you are, whatever you are, wherever you are, you can become zero one day. The hands of law are long and strong, the hands of social media are longer and stronger. कुछ गलत करोगे तो आज नहीं तो कल, कल नहीं तो परसों। It is a principle upon this earth that you have to pay for it. So tell yourself every day as a professional and as a human being, I cannot do anything wrong in my life, repeat with me, I cannot do anything wrong in my life. रोज सुबह उठ के अपने आप को यह वचन कहना, that is a dignified life. गलत करोगे तो तकलीफ तो आएगी। You might have heard the name of Rajat Gupta. According to newspaper reports and court proceedings, basically he was an IIT Kharakpur graduate, Harvard alumni, on board of McKinsey, on board of Goldman. One fine day, one of the richest investors, Warren Buffett, he proposed a personal five billion dollars of investment in Goldman. The board of Goldman met in Moscow, they decided after the discussion to accept the proposal, but because it was a credit for Goldman as well. Because Rajat Gupta was giving from his personal wealth, not from his company, Bhagshar Hathway. It is said according to the court proceedings and newspaper reports that coming out of the board meeting, Rajat Gupta made a five-second phone call to his friend, Mr. Raja Ratnam, a Sri Lankan in New York. Start purchasing Goldman as much as you can. Because he knew the next day when the announcements will be made, the shares, the stocks of Goldman will start rising. So his friend Raja Ratnam went mad behind Goldman on Wall Street. And kept purchasing it. Till the next day, the announcements were made, the prices started rising. By late noon, it was sky high, these people decided to sell it off. And it is said according to newspaper reports that they made a good two to three million dollar profit. This looks good, isn't it? One deal, one day and three million dollars clean profit, मतलब twenty-five crore rupees. It looks good, isn't it? An attorney, Mr. Preet Bharara in Manhattan started tracking back. How can somebody go mad on Goldman? Next day, some announcements are made, then he makes a big profit, he must have some inside information. And in the share markets, this is called insider trading, which is a huge crime. Because it incurs huge losses to the common man, to the small investors. In a packed courtroom, according to the court proceedings, Raja Ratnam was asked, do you confess? He said, yes. Eleven years in prison. Now it was Rajat Gupta. For him, the Western press used to write, that is the face of corporate India in the Western world. More than two hundred organizations and world international personalities that wrote to US courts that please partner Rajat Gupta to the maximum. The court said, fine. And when he confessed, he was sentenced to two years in prison in a packed press gallery in the courtroom, Rajat Gupta had nothing but tears in his eyes. His forty years of corporate image building went back into drain in a five-second mistake. He had to serve. Forty years of corporate image building can go into drain in a five-second ethical mistake. Reinvent yourself that I will always be ethically right and strong and then you will evolve yourself to lead the organization. When you are ethically right, now listen carefully what I say. When you are ethically right, you don't have to go out to search for customers. Clients and customers have to come to you. देख लेना, आपको भी अनुभव होगा और नहीं है तो करोगे। If you are ethically right, your image in the market would be such that resources have to come to you, money resources, material resources, man resources, work resources, they have to come to you. You don't have to go out and search for clients. हमने देखा है, we have seen this in the life of our guru Pramuksh Swami Maharaj, मैंने कहा, fifth standard pass. He could not speak a single sentence in English. Yet he, so much of material resources, man resources, money resources, work resources got attracted to him. Why? Ethically right. किसी का भी अहीत हो, ऐसा विचार मुझे जीवन में कभी नहीं आया। You create a personality, you create a character out of yourself. And when our guru Pramuksh Swami Maharaj was in the year two thousand, age of eighteen, Miami, Florida, Bill Clinton, he met Pramuksh Swami Maharaj and after the twenty-two minute meeting, the president said, I haven't seen such eyes full of integrity in my life. This is the biggest credit that somebody can ever have, isn't it? I haven't seen such eyes full of integrity in my life. When you evolve yourself, you lead. Before that, you have to reinvent yourself. Two things I said, reinvent yourself for prosperity thinking always, under all circumstances. Second, reinvent yourself for an absolute ethical living. And the last thing that I would like to say, reinvent yourself for a work-life balance, for a better stress or work-related pressure to be managed. For that, out of all my readings and travels, I have come to a conclusion, I have designed a formula which is called eight plus eight plus eight. You have twenty-four hours in a day. Distribute it well into eight plus eight plus eight, first eight hours is your honest ethical hard work in whichever profession you are. Second eight hours is a good sleep or rest. Third eight hours are very important. If you can live it well, you stand a good chance to win your life. If you can't live it well, you probably stand a chance to lose your life. Third eight hours, we teach three F, three H and three S. Three F is your family, friends, faith. Three H is your health, hygiene and hobby. Three S is your soul, service and smile. And these nine departments, if you can well spend, your third eight hours, it is a life well lived. You have reinvented yourself as a human being. You have reinvented yourself as a family person. So when you reinvent yourself as a human being, you will lead communities well. And when you reinvented yourself as a family person, you have evolved as a perfect family person and lead your family to better happiness. So get to work on time, work effectively during your working hours and get back to your family on time. This is called a work-life balance. People have done it. I have read the biography of Steve Jobs, he has, he used to have family dinners every day. Ex-president of America Barack Obama, he used to have family dinners every day, even during his time of eight years of presidency. I have read the biography of Warren Buffett, a family person per fact, at six thirty PM, he is back with his family for dinner. You might have heard the interview of Kumar Mangalam Birla, at eight PM, everybody is on the dinner table. So if these people can do it, can you? Yes or no? If you can't, I, let me believe that you are bigger than them. You are more busier than them. If five days in a week, you, if you cannot come back to your family by eight PM for dinner and thereafter spend half an hour for your family, sitting together, let me tell you, you are a very poor manager of time and work. मैंने कहा ना, हम ये दो, दो article पढ़ के आपके सामने नहीं आएं। I am working in this organization as an, in this NGO since thirty-two years. We know what is administration, management and HR. Work-life balance is important to manage stress. So the third aspect of reinventing yourself is a work-life balance. Decide a time bar, six, six thirty, maximum seven, leave your office. Because sometimes when I talk to professionals, I tell them that the amount of money that you have in your bank account when you die is the extra work you did, you shouldn't have done. Or if I told you did, you should have spent that money for a better cause. So work-life balance is important. And ultimately, the final word is, keep faith in God and your association with God. Not just because I am a person wearing sephora, I am a saint, that I am talking to you about devotion and faith in God. You hear top-class management gurus, Stephen Covey, Og Mandino, Ken Blanchard, Anthony Robbins, Robin Smith, Jim Collins. All these people who charge more than twenty-five thousand USD and forty thousand, fifty thousand USD for one hour of talk, what must they be teaching to the professionals sitting in front of them? Professionals sitting in front of us, we should, cannot, they don't need to be taught systems and HR and networking and work procedures, because you are all doing it efficiently well. These top-class management people that teach what you heard since last half an hour, FOC. Because I don't take any charge for my talks, I do it selflessly since thirty years I am doing it, absolutely considering it as my social service to the people. I am not charged a single penny coming here. It's my selfless service to society. What must this top-class management gurus be teaching to the professionals? यही मांस सिखाते हैं। And when you have faith in God, Stephen Covey writes in Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, connect with your creator through prayers every day. Og Mandino writes in his famous management book, The Greatest Salesman in the World. He writes, God does not play dice, he has given equal opportunities to everybody. So these people that teach you faith in God in some association and teach you some association with God, so that that chanting the holy name, that prayers, that visiting a temple can make you light and make you distressed and make you detoxified. So reinvent yourself to become a person of faith. So these four things you reinvent, you evolve yourself and you lead your, yourself, your community, your family and your organization well. Just a summary, first reinventing is prosperity thinking, never a poverty thinking. Second, be a man of ethics. Third, a proper work-life balance and fourth, faith in God. Thank you very much and all my prayers for all of you.
Very good and very insightful words of wisdom, sir. And I must salute your time punctuality, though the we late in, but you have completed. It is our luck to hear you again and again. And sir, inner engineering and life balancing and sensible, human beings, sensible citizen of India and sensible professionals, these are the key takeaways from this sessions. The impression which we carries in our profession, take the work toward us. And how we create the impression in around us, in surrounding the peoples will ultimately decide our destiny. The impression and ethical behavior and continuous that kind of the behavior will take us to that kind of the stage. Sir, as you narrated about the journey of your Sampradai, Pramuksh Swami Maharaj and eight plus eight plus eight theory is very helpful in all the professional life. So with this word concluding remarks, I must thank you to the Swamiji and his other Swamiji. I must give huge round of applause for this wonderful sessions. And thank you, sir, we will again call you whenever the same kind of the conference and gathering would be there, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sirs. Thank you, Swama ji, it was a mesmerizing and highly inspirational session. The wisdom you shared, if followed honestly by us, will definitely work as a stress buster in our lives and eventually lead to a successful future. Let's reinvent and become prosperity thinkers. As we conclude, true happiness cannot be found in external circumstances, it comes from within and is a choice we make in every moment. Thank you, Swama ji. I now request here is Rajesh Sita Parra, council member, to kindly present a memento on behalf of ICSI to our honorable guest. I've been asked to convey that the time is over no more for the questions.